All right, good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, and welcome to this March 7th Joint City and County Workshop on Comp Plan Amendments. My colleagues from the County Commission, we know that you all have an official meeting beginning at 3:00 PM, and so we're going to try and do our very best to keep this meeting on schedule. I will tell the public, one, we are very pleased to have you, obviously, as part of our meeting and our process. Your shirts tell it all. But we do want you to know, we don't take votes today, which means there is not public comment, there will be no votes today. But you're speaking loudly. With that, I now want to turn this part of the program presentation over to Mr. Barry Wilcox, who will walk us through the adoption process.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Barry Wilcox with the Tallahassee Leon County Planning Department. Hopefully, everybody can hear me, the mic's kind of down. I'd like to start off with reminding you how smoothly this process went last cycle, before we get into this cycle. But the intent of this workshop today is, obviously, to answer any questions you might have prior to the actual transmittal hearing, which will come up in April, and then a subsequent adoption hearing, which will come up in May. I'll jump right into our amendments. We have a total of seven map amendments. Four of those were privately initiated, three were publicly initiated. Three are within the county, four are within the city, and we have no text amendments for you this cycle. This is the list of amendments. Most obvious there is that the Parks and Recreation Amendment has been withdrawn, so we are down from eight to seven. We are currently, at this point, in the schedule, which is our Joint City-County Commission Workshop. Again, we have a Joint City-County Transmittal Public Hearing coming up on Tuesday, April 4th, followed by a Joint City-County Adoption Public Hearing, which would come up on May 23rd. In between those two hearings is, obviously, reviewed by the state. Once we receive those comments, we move into adoption in May. Jump right into our First Amendment. We're going to kind of take the easier ones first. Arrowhead Drive is a publicly-initiated amendment by the City of Tallahassee and is located within the unincorporated county. This is a well site that has been closed and surplused. An adjacent property owner has purchased the site from the city. It's approximately 1.78 acres in size, comprised of two parcels. As you can see here, the well site was originally designated government operation, as has been our trend for any government-owned property in the city or the county. The proposal would take it to urban fringe with residential preservation overlay and residential preservation, which is essentially consistent with all the properties surrounding it. There's a subsequent, I'm sorry, there's no rezoning associated with this amendment. You will see rezonings associated with a few of the later amendments as we go on. We found it to be consistent with the comprehensive plan, and if you'd like for us to go into detail on those consistency findings, we're happy to do so. But I'll just move right into our recommendation on this one, which is to approve the proposed map amendment to change a future land use map designation from government operation to urban fringe with residential preservation overlay and residential preservation. And with that, I'll take any questions on this amendment, if you have any. Seeing none, we'll move on to the City of Tallahassee Electric Site. This, again, is a publicly-initiated map amendment by the City of Tallahassee and is located within the unincorporated county. The site is 1.68 acres in size, and if you recall our last cycle, you'll recognize the location, which is the site of our power plant. This was a piece that the City of Tallahassee wished to bring in as part of that application, but we were not able to finalize the sale of the property till after the amendment cycle closed last year. So we're bringing it in this year. The property is currently urban residential 2, it'd be going to government operational. You see the change in the map there. There's a subsequent rezoning, which would take the property from R1 and R4 to M1 Light Industrial, which is consistent with the other property owned by the city in that location. We found this amendment to be consistent with the comprehensive plan, and we are recommending adoption of the amendment and approval of the subsequent rezoning to that amendment. And with that, I'll take any questions on this one. See, it's going to go so easy. The Thomas Park subdivision amendment is a publicly-initiated amendment by Leon County, and it is located in the unincorporated county. It is located at the intersection of Old St. Augustine Road and Capital Circle Southeast. This property, although it's designated urban residential 2 in the future land use map, had been C2 for many, many years. This was likely in oversight when we were making some relatively large map amendments back in 2006. We're proposing to take it to suburban, which is the same as property to the northeast. And there is no rezoning associated with this one, because as we've stated, it was already C2, and it had been C2 for many, many years. We found the amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan, and we are recommending adoption of this amendment. There's no rezoning associated with it. With that, I'll take any questions on that one.
Questions? Saying none.
Getting into some of our more detailed amendments. The South Side Pit, that was a title of the applicant's choosing, not ours, is a privately-initiated amendment from AG Sand Properties LLC and Sand Co. Incorporated. It is within the city limits, but it is surrounded by areas that are in the unincorporated county. It is on Capital Circle Southwest, just before you get to the wastewater treatment plant and the airport. You'll see the site here in the aerial, and the aerial is really important in this one, because you'll notice that the vast majority of the site has already been disturbed. It has been a sand mine since roughly 1985. This was a limited-use site plan associated with the permitting of the sand mine in 1985, and at that time, it was unincorporated, and it was being permitted through the county. This is one of the, at this point, one of the few things that we have to determine what is and isn't permitted on the site. The reason being, it today sits as a legally-established, non-conforming use within the city, which annexed the property in, I believe, 2002. And there was a list of requirements, buffering, access points, things of that sort, that were associated with that limited-use site plan. The applicant requested that we take the entirety of the subject site from urban residential 2 and residential preservation to suburban. Now, I'll tell you, the reason this application came to us was because of a violation by the owner of the property. If you look, I'm going to go back here for a second. If you look at the piece to the north on the subject site, that's adjacent to the subdivision there, that is not permitted to be mined at this point. And if you look at this limited-use site plan, you'll see the area in dark gray is what was delineated as the sand mine in 1985. They'd gone outside of those limits to mine into that area. They were cited by the city, and this application is part of the remedy for that citation. We did hear quite a few comments from the folks in the adjoining neighborhood, concerns regarding the operation of the mine over the last 30 years, noise that was related to rock crushing. Now, the mine is, as far as we can tell, primarily mined out, meaning there's not a lot, there's not much sand left to be mined there. But there is some reclamation activity associated with the sand mining operation that is ongoing, and that includes the crushing of concrete, the sorting of materials, because typically what you do at a sand mine is you backfill it with construction debris, and then you top it off with clean soil. In this case, the requirement was three feet of clean soil, then pine trees on top of that. You can't develop on top of that in the future, but obviously, it can be passive, open space, or something of that sort. There's a subsequent rezoning associated with this that would take the zoning on the property from R1 and R2 to light industrial. You will see there is light industrial in the immediate vicinity, primarily along Capital Circle. There's the rezoning. Now, we did struggle with this one. It is an existing sand mine. It is adjacent to a residential or several residential subdivisions. So this one was between the rock and the proverbial hard place. What we came to was a modified recommendation by staff, and that is, this is what it looks like today, this is what the applicant was proposing, this is what staff feels would be appropriate. What this would do is it would recognize the pre-existing sand mine, the one that's been there for 30 years. It would allow it to move from a legally-established, non-conforming use to a conforming use, and therefore, allow us to apply the limitations and restrictions contained in land development regulations to the site. But it also protects the area adjacent or to the west of the existing subdivision. So it kind of splits the baby there. We get the sand mine in appropriate designation. Obviously, the sand mine is not a residential use, it's an industrial use, and we retain the residential area, immediately undeveloped residential area, immediately west of the subdivision. Again, rezoning would be modified as well to retain the R2 zoning on the site west of the subdivision, but change the remainder of the sand mine to M1 or industrial. That's staff's recommendation in a nutshell. I'm happy to take any questions that may arise as part of this.
Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How much of a buffer is there between the sand pit and that residential neighborhood?
The buffer, as it existed, and I apologize for the complicated nature of this one, but it is by its very nature complicated. The limited-use site plan that you saw earlier, and I'll flip back to it here, is technically no longer in existence. The county did away with limited-use site plans back in, I believe it was 92, and replaced them with straight zonings. Your limited-use site plan years ago was equivalent to your PUD today, and so this was replaced with straight zoning. So there's a question as to whether or not what you see here is enforceable today, or whether we just treat it like a non-conforming use and just say, "Well, you're doing what you're doing, you can continue doing that, but you can't expand and you can't change use in any way." The buffers that were shown in that plan are, let me get my mouse here, roughly 75 feet, where you see the thicker portion here, and then the remainder of the buffer was 50 feet. And that was to be left as a natural vegetated buffer around the site. One of the violations that came in throughout the years was some erosion or some work being done, materials being stockpiled in this buffer, and of course, this is the most important buffer, because this is the one that's immediately adjacent to the existing subdivision. So according to this, that is to be 75 feet.
Okay. Has the owner cleared that up, where he was violated?
Is my understanding that, yes, they've removed everything from that buffer that might have been in that buffer. They've also recently moved the rock crusher from what, basically, the northern end of the site down to the southwestern corner of the site to alleviate some noise issues. Obviously, it was a fairly loud operation, and it was pretty proximate to the subdivision at that time.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In previous years, we had a couple of challenges with some kids fell into a sand pit. My question is the public safety question. Will the appropriate notices, fencing, indicators that this is not to be, you know, this is not, I know it's an attractive nuisance, but that people that keep out, and what are the stipulations that will go with this now being officially an industrial site, and what will you do to ensure that children are not playing down there in puddled water?
Thank you, Commissioners, it's a very reasonable concern. My understanding is the site is secured today, that there is fencing around the entirety of the site, and access is controlled to the site. I don't know if the applicant is here or his consultant that can speak to that more specifically. I'd have to look towards city growth management staff as to the regulations regarding the securing of the site and the prevention of people coming onto the site after hours, particularly children. Want to talk to me? Good afternoon. The Land Development Code doesn't presently address safety on these sites, but it is covered through their state permit somewhat. And of course, we would take any kind of enforcement action we needed to if we found out that the fence was knocked down, or there was a safety concern that was related to a permit that we might issue in the future.
Mr. Mayor, that was a difficulty before, when that child, I believe it was over in the northwest part of a community, fell in a sand pit, and we didn't have adequate regulations in place for notice and to keep out and all of that. And I think that the other photo showed us how close it was to a residential area, I mean, like, adjacent. I think it's encumbered on us to make those stipulations, and while it was permitted under the county's authority some years ago, it now has transitioned under the city. I still believe that notice should be something that we stipulate with this project. Thank you.
Are notices typical for light industrial? What kind of notices typically are required through our code on light industrial uses?
For the rezoning?
Not just rezoning, but existing, already previously zoned. Do we have typical sign regulation?
Through the Land Development Code, there's no notices that would occur. At the time, the environmental permit was issued, though. We could and probably would reach out to the neighbors and let them know how that was progressing.
Got it. Commissioner Dozier, follow by Commissioner Deluge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, both. This seems pretty straightforward, but I understand why it raises a lot of other concerns. So if I'm hearing this right, that the site is almost maxed out in mining, you all may not be able to necessarily answer this question today, but if this were approved in the next couple of months, it doesn't sound like it would be very long before the owners may consider selling the property, or developing it, or doing something else. I'm not asking for a specific there, but this zoning change would allow for that as well, once it's covered, as Barry described, everything like that. We would not come back and do a rezoning at that point. This would cover any future development or redevelopment of the site, is that right?
Well, that's correct. Once it's rezoned, they could sell it off for any other use that's compliant with the M1 zoning district.
Okay. And I'm just curious, I mean, because this is, because it had been mined, it may be attractive to some other development, and that just stuck out to me, that they might be nearing the end of their use of this property. I guess that's the only question for now. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Deluge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, it seems to me, can't we just, common sense, say, can you put some signs up that say danger, no trespassing? You know, I don't care what the land use code says, or what the permits say. I mean, it seems to me this is common sense. I think Commissioner Proctor makes a pretty good point there, and it'd be really a small lift, just say, we'd suggest that as part of the process, they put signs up and notify, so that the parents of the area, they know their kids aren't supposed to be playing there, and the kids know they're going to get in trouble if they go in there.
Commissioner Deluge, I didn't bring this up. I think it was a good point that Commissioner Proctor brought up, but I thought when we looked at this issue a few years ago, that signage and fencing and other things were part of the requirements by the state permit, so maybe we could ask staff just to let us know at the next meeting in April, what those requirements of the state permit are, and then if we want to take action respectively, city or county, we could?
I'd just say we want to have them do it.
Well, yeah, I just don't know if we have the authority to require it. That was my question. I don't know.
You want to address that, or?
If you'd like to see the list of requirements the state might place on this type of operation, we can look into that, try to put that together.
Great. Commissioner, I saw, and I couldn't remember, I think you were first?
Yeah, I think I'll say.
You'll yield, okay.
I thought, it was my understanding that they absolutely had to fence a facility like this, and I actually was so intrigued by this that I drove out there and drove all around the other day, and it does seem like they have a fence. It also seems like there's a buffer there. But I was just wondering what, following up on Commissioner Dozier's line of thinking, what is in store in the future, and how do you make sure that any decision that we make on this isn't going to have some future impact? As far as buffering and any other use that might end up there?
As it stands now, we're operating and continuing to use this limited-use site plan to the best extent we can, and that requires the buffer. And if they came, if the developer came to us and wanted to make changes to the site, the owner, that is, we would require a new environmental permit, at which point we would require the buffers.
Commissioner Jackson.
Yeah, just lastly, normally, standing water is also an issue, particularly if they've exhausted the sand resources. It probably means they're down to clay, which is, you know, are they responsible for treating their stormwater that accumulates? I'm assuming that would be part of the report that staff would bring back to us.
They are. And they're doing it to some extent now. We don't, since we don't have a permit, and we haven't really investigated their stormwater management system that much, we're not sure whether they would meet today's code or not, but they are treating it.
Commissioner Metz.
On point to that, you said you're not sure, and they're doing some of it now. Would that be part of the consideration in what's happening right now?
That would be part of the enforcement action that we're taking right now, and that we would finish up as soon as this process is completed.
Okay, so as soon as the process- Okay, so as soon as the process is completed, they'd be required to fully come up to code to what we have currently as our standards?
If you were to approve this amendment, then we would ask that they come in for a new permit and meet today's code. But there's no requirement that they do that since they're illegally non-conforming use now.
Interesting.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions on this item? All right. Singa.
Thank you, Commissioners. Do want to point out while we did, staff did have a modified recommendation of approval on this, the LPA did vote to deny this amendment. All the previous amendments were voted for approval by the LPA.
And the denial was on you all's adjusted recommendation or the original?
On the adjusted recommendation, which is what we had put forward.
And on the original request, the rectangular part of the site?
Right.
You had mentioned that the mining use had moved into that. Has it now moved out of that area?
It has been, due to the actions taken by Growth Management, that has been stopped. So yes, that was part, that's actually the action that brought us here today.
Got it.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Commissioner Proctor.
Could we specifically understand what the LPA's reservation was? Is that noted?
Do we have the LPA's? Let me see if I can find you the, essentially the summary that we provided regarding the LPA's vote on that. It's not in verbatim, okay. But here we go. Now, we don't have verbatim what the issues were that the LPA brought up as part of this.
Maybe between now and such time as we take action on this, we can provide the minutes to the board. Thank you.
If there are no other questions, we'll move on to our next amendment, which is Amelia Circle. This is a privately initiated amendment and is within the city limits. This is located on Tennessee Street, just west of Ocala. This is a longstanding subdivision. An applicant came to us and requested that several of the residential lots in the subdivision be converted to non-residential uses and requested a suburban land use as well as an office residential zoning district. And here you see the change from RP to suburban as proposed by the applicant. And the subsequent rezoning from RP1 residential to OR1 office. Staff had issues with this, and I'll just kind of summarize this real quickly. Taking these small residential lots and converting them to businesses often has pretty dramatic effects. Not the least of which is there are still folks in the neighborhood who do not wish to see their neighborhood converted into small offices. Secondly, though, there are many circumstances and many examples out there where we've done this. And it leads to access issues as well as parking issues because we know these homes were not built and intended to be businesses at any point. So in particular, the businesses or the homes that are fronting Tennessee Street there each have an individual driveway cut, which would be an individual business entrance. We assume that if this were approved, that the front yards would be converted to some sort of parking lot. So it makes for a very difficult situation and definitely it's hard to be consistent with our current code as it applies to the development of non-residential properties. So for that reason, we did recommend denial of this amendment. The LPA supported that recommendation and that is what we are bringing forward to you here today.
Commissioner Dozier. Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Barry, in looking at this, I agree with the planning commission and staff's recommendation on this. It did raise the question, and you were just getting there. We've got a few areas where, on a four-lane road, we've got driveways coming out. I can think of someone, Tharp, I can think, you know, Tennessee Street. And this is something that's grandfathered in. I'm guessing as the road expanded. So just to that point, are there any, are there any rules? I mean, if this owner, if someone were to look at this entire parcel here within Amelia Circle, I mean, all the owners weren't there. They wanted to convert all that to commercial. Do we have requirements to get rid of those curb cuts and have an interior road to access commercial? Is that something we do with a putt? I'm just, I don't foresee this happening, but it raises a real interesting question that could affect this and other areas of the community, right?
Sure. And, you know, it's a state roadway, so they control the curb cuts on the roadway. They're pre-existing curb cuts. What would happen to those under a redevelopment scenario is really their decision. But assuming someone could aggregate multiple parcels into some developable piece, they would likely be required to close off the curb cuts down to maybe one or two, depending on the site size. This is a really, as you pointed out, we see this in several places. It's a hard nut to crack because it's subdivisions that were created years and years ago. Sometimes when that road was a two-lane road. Now we have folks who come to us and say, "I own a single-family home facing a large arterial roadway. What am I supposed to do with it?" It's a difficult one, but at the same time, converting them into individual businesses creates many times more problems than it solves.
I agree, that's not the solution for this, but I think we may be faced with this question in the future. So I appreciate the answer. And it may be something that we all want to think about. I would guess the state would not want that many curb cuts either if they could avoid it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Proctor followed by Mayor Protim Ziffer.
Mr. Mayor, this is a request of staff that prior to our voting on this issue, I would like to, a site visit to see the matter. When you use the word West Tennessee Street here in Tallahassee, I think of it as commercial frontage. It's very difficult. I can't even fathom a piece of property along West Tennessee Street that is not of a commercial ilk. I'd like to see and requesting staff for a visit to see it, that I might gather some comfort level to support staff's recommendation. But if we were voting that day, I would not support this because as of today, I'm unaware of a place that would be a discomfort to a commercial setting on Tennessee Street.
We'd be happy to accommodate that.
Commissioner Ziffer followed by Commissioner Dozier. Deluge.
You raised, you had a comment that some of the interior places, if they were to go to commercial, there might be some parking issues, for example, in the front of these. How does stormwater, how was it accommodated then? I mean, clearly, there wouldn't be enough on-site. And so how do we deal with stormwater?
It makes for a very, very difficult situation where you're using every last inch of the site to try to accommodate for stormwater, parking and all the other requirements, which is why conversions of smaller residential lots, obviously, if we were talking about acre-sized lots, it's a different game. But the smaller lots into non-residential uses becomes very problematic for us moving forward. In terms of, if we went into any further detail again, I'd have to look to Growth Management as to what the requirements would be of converting a single-family home into a business.
It's awkward. Okay. Thank you.
I actually lived in one of those houses when I was a student at Florida State. And I can tell you, just getting in and out as a residence, I remember distinctly getting practically rear-ended every time you went to turn in or come out because the traffic along there is doing 50, 60 miles an hour. And it's, you know, coming to that turn. So I can't imagine any scenario where we would let a business locate there unless, to Commissioner Dozier's point, we had an ability to consolidate and somehow limit or back-end the curb cuts so it's into the other side of the circle there. So I think this is the appropriate thing to do.
Commissioner Richardson.
Mr. Mayor, is it my understanding, though, that there are some commercial business in that area? That's why they were asking for this? Because there are other commercial?
There is commercial across the street. Anything you see in purple up there is our suburban category, which does allow non-residential uses. The areas that you see in orange are residential preservation. So whether there's any businesses being run out of any of these residential units that are part of the Amelia Circle subdivision, I don't know. I don't believe they would be permitted unless they were a legally permitted home occupation. But obviously, if someone was running a hair salon out of one of those places, that would be a code enforcement issue.
Very just for clarification. This is, yeah, this is the proposed, right? So there's a few purple, there you go.
There you go.
That's the way it looks right now.
Correct, correct. And another issue is obviously these aren't contiguous lots. Some of them are contiguous, but not all of them are contiguous. So it poses another problem of, in some cases here, we would have, you know, one spot of orange in between properties that are designated suburban.
So everything in there now is residential?
Single-family residential, yes, sir.
And being used as residential?
Hopefully so, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Singa.
Great. We'll move on to our next amendment, Old Willis Dairy. This is a privately initiated amendment by Frank Willis. It is within the city limits and it's located.
Just one moment.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
And I should know this answer. Since we eliminated the business tax last year, the city, and you guys got rid of it a few years ago, right? We wouldn't know if somebody was running in-home business there, would we?
We may not.
I mean, how would we identify that if no one has to?
In your case, they'd pull an electric, if they were running a business and they...
Yeah, but if they're, I mean, it used to be if you ran an office out of your home, you still had to pull, you had to file for a license. Right.
You guys used your electric department when they came in as a business to get an electric permit. And you said, "We've got to have a business license." So that was pretty easy. If they're an existing home and they flip it to a salon or childcare.
No, but what I'm saying is if you operate your business out of your home and you're occupying 10% for your business, it used to be you had got an in-home business license. We don't do that anymore. We got rid of that last year. So we wouldn't know if people are operating business out of there anyways.
Mr. Mayor?
Maybe, if you could come to the microphone to offer a comment. The other, I think that may not be our problem until 2017, 2018. Later this year, rather, when we make the switch over. This year's budget still has it in there. So we still may have that data for the city, but that will be our future problem.
I was just pointing out that we used to regulate it that way through business licensing, but now it's through either complaints or someone, more often than not, comes in and asks for a change of use through building inspection and wants to convert it. They want to install sinks or they want to somehow change the interior.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Dozier.
Commissioner Ziffer brings up a good point here. I think we had an issue a few years ago in the county. And the only reason it came to our attention was code enforcement complaints on the number of cars parking in the front yard. So, yeah, it relies on the neighbors. And that doesn't seem like the most efficient, but we don't have the money to police everything anyhow. So it's a real good point. I hadn't thought about it before with the business license.
And there's Hospital 17, it'll take care of the whole thing anyway.
Well, that's true.
On that note.
Old Willis Dairy. Privately initiated amendment by Frank Willis. It's within the city limits. It's located along Centerville Road, just northeast of TMH. Many of you are probably familiar with the site. It's, most buildings are painted white, historic home on the site as well as a very large barn-like structure. You'll see on the aerial there approximately where it's located. It's a 3.4-acre site. It's currently designated residential preservation. The request was to take it to suburban. There is a subsequent rezoning, which would take it from RP1 and RP2 to OR2 office. This one has an interesting history to it. This is the original site of the Old Willis Dairy, which, again, encompassed a much larger area many, many years ago. The dairy, to our understanding, came into operation in the 1930s, has been owned by the Willis family since. Obviously, a large portion of the dairy has been sold off to development in the surrounding area. But the dairy originally operated as both a dairy but also as a storefront for the dairy, selling dairy-related products. Over the years, the site was also used to house a construction company. And it's essentially got a, what we would say is a mixed-use background to it because it's always been a primary residence as well. In the last two years, the large barn structure has been converted to an event location. Some of you, I know I already heard from a few, have actually attended events there. In the last two years, there's been 50 events held there. There was some concern about noise possibly being a problem with this event venue. We tracked that through TPD and found that there had been one complaint but no citation that was actually granted on that complaint. So the desire here is to continue operating the event venue as it is today. Again, this one came to us due to a code enforcement issue. Somebody called and said they're operating this as an event venue, but it's in a residential preservation area. I will say there is precedent for having these sort of event venues located in residentially designated areas. Most of you are familiar with the Women's Club in Los Robles. There's also, I'm trying to think, there's also the Garden Club, which is downtown here but in an area surrounded by residential. And there are a few other ones that are out there as well that are operating as event venues. So the desire here is, again, to continue with the event venue operation, change the land use to an appropriate land use and zoning that would allow for that to occur.
Commissioner Lanley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have heard from some of the neighbors who are concerned about spillover parking into the residential areas around there. Is there any record of complaints or violations of things? You said there are 50 events in the last couple of years?
We're not aware of any complaints, official complaints regarding the parking situation. And talking to Frank Willis, who operates the site, they try to accommodate as much of the parking on-site as they possibly can and try to have most of that traffic come and go from Centerville Road as opposed to into the adjoining subdivision. But on occasion, you know, anytime you're doing anything, people are, on occasion, going to park where they choose to park, as we know. And I'm sure there is parking and overspill that does occur on some of the residential streets in the surrounding area.
Commissioner Miller.
Thank you. I would like for you to elaborate on the parking, if you could. How are they parking and where? And are they accessing from Goodwood Drive? And is that, can they legally do that? That's a local road.
They do have an access point from Goodwood Drive. And I'll read a statement here from the, obviously, the proprietor of the event venue. "Old Willis Dairy rental agreement only allows 45 vehicles in the parking lot and three vendor parking spaces behind the barn. We have parking for additional 10 vehicles along the right-of-way on Goodwood Drive on our side of the road." They own several parcels on Goodwood Drive. "Our parking attendant will instruct attendees that they are not allowed to park on any other locations along Goodwood Drive." OWD? Thank you. I should have gotten that one. "Old Willis Dairy requires a sheriff deputy at the entrance for any event over 125 guests. Parking along the right-of-way by our neighbors on the neighborhood streets is common occurrence for birthday parties, football parties, et cetera. Lawn maintenance companies park in the street quite often or almost on a daily basis." So it does look like they're doing their best to be good neighbors and keep that traffic off of the adjoining residential street, but being mindful of the fact that they do have frontage on that street that they use for on-street parking. And on-street parking is permitted in those locations.
Are there hours of operation?
There are. Yeah, they're open until 10:00 PM. So they close down by 10:00 PM for these events.
By their decision or is there?
Well, this is, again, another one that's a bit odd because it's currently, it's currently not a permitted use. If it does become a permitted use, then there's the ability for, am I right, City Growth Management to enforce? Oh, if it's a PUD? Oh. Okay, all right. Otherwise, yeah, there's no hours of operation. This is something that they enforce under, yes.
Other questions on this item?
Just a comment. Commissioner Ziffer?
It wasn't like West Tennessee Street. But a couple of years ago, I lived off of Goodwood. My wife and I were renovating a house, sorry. And I do have concerns about the traffic coming back off of Goodwood for a couple of reasons. It's clearly a residential street. And the other thing is, that intersection is not an easy intersection. There's almost, I don't want to say a blind spot, but there's this point, as I recall, I think it's the road is a little high and low coming out of Centerville. And it's awkward to get in and out of there. And that concerns me a great deal.
Do we have the, any, I guess, though, any traffic studies would not give you a true representation of the event itself because it's a neighborhood?
Yeah, it's event traffic, so it's not regular traffic. It's hard to study. But again, given that they're limited to 45 vehicles, It's hard to study, but again, given that they're limited to 45 vehicles, that gives you an idea of what the potential impact during an event would be.
Got it. Other questions on this item? Sing now.
Thank you. And the LPA did recommend approval of this item, concurring with staff's opinion. Onto our, yes, ma'am.
Where are you going? I had asked Barry the other day, when uses are changed like this, how do you bring a parcel up to code, up to the new designation that it has? Because if a piece of property goes through permitting, you know, they're required to do buffers and stormwater and parking and transportation plan and all that. And when, and this is the second one now that we've had, well, all of them are actually red, you know, changing. And so what is, apparently, and you can help, but maybe you want to answer the question, what is in place that addresses the new situation that's there versus the old situation that was there before?
Commissioner's become land development code issues, so I'm going to let Growth Management answer your question if that's okay.
Those are, with the change of use, those are typically done through building permit applications.
I mean, if it's already built?
If it's already built, then, and a lot of that is complaint-driven at that time. We would go back and look at those, address them.
So if there are complaints after this occurs, if this change occurs, there are, if there is a complaint, then you'll go in and...
We would do an investigation of that complaint, yes.
Situation, okay, thank you.
Can I ask?
Commissioner Proctor.
Following that line of questioning, at what point does a property simply as grandfather on the standards of which it originally was, its original character? Because to go back and to do a follow-up and to follow the question that Commissioner Miller asked, it seems as if we would butcher the concept of grandfathering.
And grandfathering, although it's a commonly used term, I don't think is more one of art and not one that we typically use. We usually refer to it as a legally established, non-conforming use. In this case, this is not a legally established, non-conforming use. It's a non-conforming use, but the use was established recently and as a non-conformity. A legally established, non-conforming use would be more akin to the sandmine, which was legally established through permits some years ago and then due to changes in entitlements on the site, made it non-conforming. In this case, this is a site that, again, our history tells us has been used for a variety of purposes throughout the years. It was not changed to an event venue space until about two years ago, so I wouldn't classify it technically as a legally established, non-conforming use at this point, but it does have a long history of various uses on the site.
Commissioner Dozier.
I was going to say this until our next meeting, but I would just say that some of these sites, the historic sites are challenging. I mean, Women's Club, I always feel for the folks in the surrounding area, because there's a lot of cars in that neighborhood when they have events, but I am glad that they have pursued and done so well with saving these historic buildings. I'm glad that they've already gotten approval. I assume, I think I read it was going to the City Commission later this summer after a few more steps to get the historic preservation, or the historic designation for this.
Right.
So they've done a lot of work there. I think it's in our interest generally to preserve buildings like this, but it does present unique challenges. So just having intended events there, it does seem like they always have in a parking attendant. Others, I have similar concerns. I'm not sure what we do about the entrance exit on the road, but in general, I'm a fan if we can find ways to have some of these historic properties preserved and open for events and to the public.
Just real quickly, and in light of the fact that we're going to be moving to the next item, I thought it was appropriate, the word grandfather was used. I'm the only grandfather at the table. Just wanted to point that out for point of reference.
I told them unless Commissioner Deloge has news, but...
Speaking of historic, I will say that the ARB did approve the placement of this site on the Historic Register and it'll be coming to the City Commission for final approval very soon, so. With that, we will move on to the last amendment of the...
On that note...
Yes, ma'am.
Shouldn't they be asking, are we going to have to go through another zoning experience at that point? Okay, thank you.
No, yeah. Our last amendment of the afternoon is the Klaran Country Club Amendment. This is a privately initiated amendment within the city limits. I'll go through this in great details. I'm sure none of you have heard of this one before. This is a somewhat complicated amendment in that there are multiple sites involved and this aerial is about the best we could do for delineating those sites. You'll see sites A, B, C, D, and E, with E being the site of primary discussion here. This is along the Northern Nine, as it's referred to, in the Klaran Estates neighborhood and along the, in the Klaran Country Club in particular. Sites A, B, C, and D, and let me walk you through the land use change here. There is how it sits today. Given that it was a golf course, it was designated recreation and open space on the future land use map. Now, oddly enough, it was not designated that on the zoning map. The zoning map actually designates the golf course as residential, but in this case and in all cases, the future land use map takes precedence over the zoning map. So the proposed request is to take sites A, B, C, and D to residential preservation, which is consistent with the surrounding areas. So they would have the same entitlement rights as the neighbors to either side of them. Site E, on the other hand, is proposed to be converted to urban residential and we'll go through what the urban residential category permits here in just a moment. So, again, there is a rezoning, but only for site E. The rest of the sites, there's no rezoning, as those sites are already designated RP1 and RP2 on the future land use map.
And there's proposed residential development in those areas, A, B, and C?
Correct, correct. Just in those areas, just in these small, as you can see here, Commissioner, just in those isolated areas there, primarily ones that are adjacent to roadways that cross the fairways in those locations.
Are any of those being contested or...
There is concern. We've had some concerns shown for development of residences on those lots. I'll be honest with you, it's been a bit of an interesting discussion, as we've been told that RP and RP1 is not consistent with RP and RP1, at which point I said, "I really don't have anything else to offer you. That's as close as I can get." So, so we find that those, yeah, those are at a different level than site E, which is why I kind of isolate that one for discussion.
All right, thank you.
So, some of our key findings. As most of you know, our comprehensive plan promotes infill and redevelopment. More than promotes, it gives it precedence over continuing to develop our periphery or our greenfields. So we struggle mightily at many times to find good locations for infill and redevelopment within the urban service area. We've determined that this is one of those locations and that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and its associated policies, as well as the vision of the plan. I'm going to hand out to you an article that was, that you may have seen passed around. This is from a recent issue of Planning Magazine. I hope I have enough for everybody. If not, Mayor Dustin has your copy. I handed it to him earlier today, sorry. There's a lot of talk as of late about the fate of golf in the United States. An ESPN special not too long ago about golf, the waning days of golf, shared a figure of one golf course closing every 48 hours in the United States at this point. You'll see on the right there, the golf by the numbers, which were quoted in the article that you have before you and from the World Golf Foundation. We have seen, we saw 76 percentage, I'm sorry, you're seeing a 5% reduction in courses from 2006 to 2015. That means not only have we stopped building any additional golf courses, but we're actually closing down golf courses at a relatively alarming rate. You'll also see some of the quotes up there that state, "In fact, in the last 10 years, there have been more closings than openings. 500 courses could close in the next two to five years and because of their size, layout, and location, golf courses can often be converted to other uses." And the article walks you through many local governments that have, that have gone through exactly this, this same thing that you've gone through here today.
Commissioner Ziffer?
I just have a question.
Sure.
And I, and I'm sure this is pertinent, but we all have enough information and I don't want to be too much appearing like we're trying to sell something here.
Sure.
And so let's just move on to the next part of the discussion, couldn't we?
Absolutely, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Sure. So getting to the Klaran Amendment in particular, this is a quote from the, and I'll walk you through this, because there is a concern for the UR designation on this particular site. Within our UR category, it states that the category may be applied in areas that are not the interior to a neighborhood. And so as I walk you through this, you'll, I'm kind of telling you why that doesn't apply in this, this particular instance. So this is straight from the Klaran Homeowners Association. Throughout the years, various distinctive neighborhoods have developed in Klaran, so that folks have choices. Large yards for gardeners, no yards for those that want, want little to no upkeep, condos, apartments, townhomes, et cetera. This is a master plan for Klaran. It dates back to 19, I believe this is the 1980 plan, and in it, you'll see that there are condominiums, townhomes, apartments and condos in places that are currently single-family residential, but that the original plan for Klaran did anticipate a broad variety of housing choices in the area. This is a 1990 zoning map prior to the adoption of the comprehensive plan that shows us that there is a broad variety of zoning districts, some of these districts of which got all the way up to 46 units per acre, so. And you'll see site E would be the green patch kind of to the north here. I'm going to locate it right here. This is site E and you'll see that the surrounding areas were designated with a higher density than, than the larger part of Klaran Estates here. This was a density analysis that was conducted by the planning department to determine what exactly is built out there, because on the future land use map, all of this is designated as residential preservation at a density of six units per acre. But in reality, we see that things like the Kilrush Townhomes are at close to eight units per acre. The Country Club Villas are at almost nine and a half, nine and a quarter units per acre and the Kennelwood Townhomes are at six, a little over six units per acre. So we've got a diversity of density in these locations. Just a few site pictures. Kennelwood condominiums is very much laid out in a, almost a townhome community-type complex with shared dumpsters and parking. We've got visitor-designated parking. This is the Kilrush Apartments and you'll see that these are laid out in very much a complex tile manner and these are the Villas and you'll see the Villas are at fairly significant density here. Again, this is the vision statement that I mentioned earlier and you'll see it clearly states that is the intent of the plan to maintain the integrity of the existing neighborhoods while encouraging new residential development incorporated into a wide range of non-residential uses, so. To the urban residential category, which has been requested by the applicant, the category allows for townhomes, single-family detached, two-family, and multifamily dwellings. While we do use the term multifamily in the designation, I want you to understand that this allows only up to 10 units per acre. 10 units per acre does not allow for garden-style apartment complexes like we see all around town. At best, it allows for townhomes. What's meant by multifamily dwellings in this category is typically a quad or a triplex, although quads and triplexes tend to be closer to 12 to 14 units per acre. So the UR category really is more of a townhome to small lot detached, single-family category. And again, getting to that, the kind of, the point of this is the category is not intended to be implied within the interior of an existing neighborhood. As we look at the map, we'll note that the areas to the west of the site that are currently designated RP are actually not RP neighborhoods, as we pointed out. We're proposing that we expand this amendment to include those areas, that site E in particular is not the interior of a neighborhood per se, but actually on the edge of a neighborhood adjoining a country club, as well as other higher-density development. And you'll see our proposed expansion of the amendment to include those areas that we found to be non-conforming, at least from a density standpoint. Our recommendation, again, is to approve the amendment, expand the amendment to include those areas you see in a crosshatch and the subsequent rezonings that are associated with it.
Commissioner Dozier, you still have more?
That's it. I just wanted to point out that ours is an approval modification in that the local planning agency did recommend denial of this amendment.
And do you, are you able to eliminate any of the...
There were concerns for, again, the reason, and I apologize, I didn't do a great lead-in on the UR history to it, but the primary concern for, for the LPA was the intrusion of higher-density residential into these lower-density residential neighborhoods. Again, the point I was trying to make with our presentation is that this is a mixed neighborhood at best and that we actually have densities equivalent to what's being proposed here today, immediately adjacent to this property to the west.
I was, I was going to let Brian go first.
No, go ahead.
Thank you, Barry. So county's got a commission meeting in 25 minutes, so I'm going to say I would really love the answer to these questions next month. I don't know how much time we've got today. I mean, I don't want to shortchange anyone else, but I'm fine getting answers to these questions next month. First, I had questions about what multifamily looked like and how many units, you know, per acre 10 looked like and everything. I thought I had a good sense of that, but the triplex-quad example really helped. So just for future reference, I was kind of going back and forth on RP2 versus urban residential and wondering, more of the non-conforming use looked like RP2 and why not just go up to six per acre instead of all the way to 10? And I know the City Commission has heard a lot more about the traffic impact than we've heard, so that is something else I would like to hear a little bit more about at our April meeting, but I guess I just wanted to make that statement, that I was on the fence about the urban residential up to 10. That did help me and if we could get a little more information about that at the next meeting, I think that might help a little bit more. But the traffic impact of 10 units, those 10 units each have two cars versus six, that's a pretty big difference, so I'd like to hear more about that. And then, not to really focus on this too much, but I'm going to piggyback on what Commissioner Ziffer said earlier when he stopped you on the golf course issue. I can't tell you how much I appreciate everyone at place, the professionalism, the work that you put into this and all of the different meetings, so I want to say that upfront. This item read very unusual to me, because it seemed like we were really, really trying to justify this. To me, I mean, the owner's commitment, what they want to do, the use of private property, this is great that they want to do conservation, other things, it's not bound by the comp plan. All we can look at is the highest use of the rezoning, because somebody could sell it and do whatever we allow them to do under that. And it really, I'd never seen the full vision statement written here. I hope we tackle that when we do comp plan revision soon. It's a little wordy, but it just, it really, it was unusual to me and I just, I wanted to mention that, because I think we have to look at how much is allowed under whatever decision we make here and any future owner could, could go to that maximum. So some of that information about the quads, triplex would be helpful. The other side of that coin is, this is a valued asset for Klaran. I guess one of the things that stood out for me is, I wasn't working on the comp plan back in the early 90s. I was probably at one of the high schools in 90, but I think, my sense is, Klaran might have been the definition of sprawl at one point, so justifying this based on what their original intent was and urban, you know, infill seems a little funny to me. We're kind of coming out to meet Klaran. Yes, we've built out to meet them now, which is great, but we're going to be faced with this a lot in the next few years. We've had two big issues this year. So as we all get into our revision of the land use component, I think urban infill and looking at this area and how we want to describe this is invaluable and Klaran and Myers Park both have helped us work through this and all the citizens who participated. This has been a great year to kind of dig into this area and I just hope we can dig in even more, so thank you.
Commissioner, if I could just speak to those issues very quickly. This staff report read very differently before we went to the LPA. We were asked a great deal of questions, very, very reasonable questions by the LPA and basically built the staff report up some after that to address this question of why you are and why here and is it possible? And so if it reads as if we're defending our standpoint on this, because we were, we really truly did feel it was that way. In regards to the location of Klaran, I would say, yeah, it was, you know, on the periphery back in the day, but what we were really highlighting was the fact that it was a mixed-use and still is a mixed-use community and it's often just seen as a residential subdivision. and still is a mixed-use community, and it's often just seen as a residential subdivision.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Deluge, followed by Commissioner Proctor, followed by Commissioner Ziffer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's interesting watching the evolution of this when the first proposal came through a while back, which was immediate knee-jerk, oh my god, this is the end of the world as we know it. And, you know, I remember the first couple of neighbors that called and said, this absolutely is going to be terrible. I've seen a bit of a groundswell, the St. Patrick's Day theme out here today certainly is a nice note, but it looks like a nice, the developer, the homeowners, the homeowners, the association themselves, our planning department have all worked together, and it looks like we're most of the way there. I'm not going to say it's perfect. I know Commissioner Dozier likes getting into weeds a little bit, but we're awful close. No, but I mean, I think we've got something that I think meets most people's need, and I think you have to look at the greater good in the grand scheme of things, which is, I think, what, if you step away from this and look down the road a little bit and say, you know, let's look at 40,000 feet, let's not get down, and I think we're moving in a positive direction, and I think I could support this when it comes through, so.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Proctor, followed by Commissioner Ziffer, followed by Commissioner Miller.
Commissioners, I wanted to ask staff what distinguished staff's recommendation from the LPA's recommendation, are there 100 yards apart, 80, 60 yards, is it within field goal range, or can a hail mary get it done? And I really want to know, is it a technical difference? Is it a political difference? Is it, what distinguishes LPA from our staff, when both distinguished august bodies, looking at the same facts, differ in their recommendation? So maybe prior to our next meeting, I'm very, very curious on those two distinct points.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ziffer.
Okay, so let's just say that there was a majority to approve this. How do we, and at what point, because I'm sure we all have thoughts, potentially, say in advance of doing all that and memorializing restrictions we might have? In other words, I think, you know, not only sightline, but also distance between development in existing homes, or one or two-story, or, I mean, through a PUD, we can do all the way down, I think, paint color. So at what point, if we went that route, could we really memorialize exactly what we're talking about, and exactly what area, and exactly what it's going to look like, so that if we did go that route, we could offer at least some protection to people that clearly have, in my opinion, some justifiable concerns?
Sure. Commissioner, there's multiple ways to do that, some of which are within our wheelhouse, some of which are outside of it. Obviously, the PUD or the Development Agreement is something that we would be party to. Covenants and restrictions are something that occur outside of our process, but between property owners within a neighborhood, there are many, many covenants and restrictions within the Klarne Estates development. They, my understanding that currently the developer is working with the Homeowners Association to come up with a list of mitigation, let's say, conditions to be placed within covenants and restrictions for the development of this site. And those include things like buffering, the placement of other areas that aren't developed into conservation easement, restriction of the number of units that can occur on the site so as to not trip any transportation-related issues, as well as a few other minor points.
Because clearly, A, B, C, and D have different issues than potentially E, and yet they have some in common, because I know that the maximum number of units per acre in A, B, C, and D could conceivably be a lot more than what at least we've heard is being considered. And, I mean, I would want to make sure that if it did go down that route and we approved this, that we were really concise and specific on, okay, you can only do this there, otherwise I'm going to have difficulty with doing anything. And I'm not saying I'm going down that road, but if I did, I'd have to have some comfort.
Correct. A, B, C, and D are, while RP does allow up to six units per acre, RP1 does not allow that many units, only allows 3.2, 3.6 units per acre. You'd be talking about a difference of third-acre lots versus half-acre lots in those scenarios.
Oh, sorry.
The county has tired of this conversation.
City's still, we're still here, we're hanging in.
I understand.
This is why we normally have it in our house, but we like coming to your house, too.
Commissioner Miller, if you don't mind, you'll into Commissioner Dozier, and then we'll circle right back around.
Completely off-topic before I walk out of the room. This particular time, we had a lot of questions about who votes on what, whose vote counts. In the future, will you all include that on the agenda items? It would just help, I think, a lot of constituents get some clarity on who to talk to, although I will also say, I'm really glad we all have these conversations together. There's been some discussion to the contrary, but thank you all for that. Enjoy.
Thank you. All who are willing to annex away from Leon County. I'm joking. That left the table, you know, may take some votes. Commissioner Miller.
Well, first of all, I appreciate Commissioner Ziffer bringing up the control topic, because we are, we've, I've heard from the developers' representatives, I've heard from the folks who are affected the most radically. I've walked the entire area, and I, you know, there are a lot of things that have been said, and I want to make sure that those, that's what it shows up at the end of the day, if this is approved. The fact that the money will be set aside, all these are, you know, the covenants and restrictions and so on, and I was really hoping that they would agree to a PUD, because then at least it has to come back before the commission so that we could say, are you putting in the appropriate buffers? Because there are 14 homeowners that are massively affected by this. It was more, and the others live on the rest of the Narrows, but at least that will be green space versus someone else in the backyard. So that, I wanted to ask that of everyone, because we do need to, it's not just in this case, but in the future, we're going, when we've come across these infill situations like we had in two cases this time, we are going to need to be able to know more certainty as, and Commissioner Ziffer is noticing, handing out candy to everyone as his political, and I'm up here making all this political talk.
Right.
Anyway, some, and I hope that you will encourage people in the future who come in for infill projects to consider that option when they ask for a zoning change. So that was the first thing. The second is in regards to the LPA. We have denials on half of the amendments this time, and so it's going to be very important that you bring us information about what that thinking was, how the discussion went, what the points of contention were, if it wasn't unanimous, and what the points of disagreement were with the planning staff. If you have a, I mean, in one case, one of the denials was consistent with yours, but still, we need more information about the conversations that go on at the LPA. And finally, the traffic issue. And back to the certainty, I noticed on the map, and I've discussed this with the traffic planner for the project, the fact that Site E actually touches Sawgrass, I think that's the name of the road, yes, actually touches it, but that neighborhood is an enclave of retired people whose homes are close to the road, there are sidewalks, it is in every way encourages people to walk, and it's totally unsafe to put a major thoroughfare through there. And so that, at the end of the day, has to be memorialized in whatever happens. And that goes for Pebble Creek, too. In both cases, that's a private subdivision, they privately have just, it seems like, repaved their roads, they keep up their own neighborhoods, and to have that be a traffic outlet for this development is not really reasonable. And then, in addition, we have one way out, and that's Tyrone Pass, so I'm hoping you're going to explain more when we have our public hearing, you'll be able to discuss that in much more detail.
In particular, the access, or...
Well, yes, the access issue, what, I want to know more about the overload on Shannon Lakes. I want to know if there's anything else that you have discovered that could be done to alleviate that, because normally, putting a road into basically the red zone is not recommended, when you know that ahead of time. So considering that, and then that goes along with the 55 and plus determination, and which is hopefully going to distribute the traffic over someday, but as Commissioner Ziffer said, once this zoning is changed, unless there is some overlaying restrictive document, the developer can, or sell the property, and whoever buys it can do whatever is listed. I mean, he walks in here with one set of rights and walks out with another, and if that property changes hands, so. Loud flag for me about guarantees, and that's going to come up again in our conversation the next time, so please be ready.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Got a question? Well, not a question, just a point. You know, we, I'm sorry. It really is just a point. I mean, I agree with all of what's been said in terms of the assurances and, you know, the agreements through mediation. I assume that the mediation is still going on, and that's where all the issues are being raised for the covenants and restrictions, and...
That's our understanding. We're not part of the mediation.
I'll keep order. Go ahead.
This is what makes this a little bit difficult, is we do have a homeowners association in operation, and while the homeowners association does speak for some of the community, there's our portions of the community that say the homeowners association does not speak for them, therefore, any mediation with the homeowners association is not mediation with everyone in the community. It becomes very difficult to navigate, especially given the fact that that's kind of outside of our realm. That's something going on between the developer and the homeowners association and the other residents in the community.
Okay. The point that I wanted to make is, you know, I can be comfortable with that, I just wish we had done the same thing for the Ridge Road property. Mr. Mayor, that was a PUD, and we didn't ask for any specificity at all. So I just put that out there for us to consider in the future.
Great. Staff, are there any other issues, either germane to this or otherwise? Commissioner Miller?
Right. I wanted to, we just went through the similar exercise on Kilkarene, remember?
Correct.
Commissioners, you'll have to lean into the microphones as best you can.
Kilkarene, I mean, I drive by there every day, every single solitary day, I apologize for not being able to pronounce it, but Kilkarene, even the folks on the road didn't explain that to me. What did we change that zoning to?
That zoning was changed, there were two zoning changes there. There was UR and UR2, and it's important to point this out, because that contained an actual apartment complex, a rental community that was of significant density, we had to go with UR2 in that scenario. But as part of that amendment, and if I could bring this, let me find a good map here, as part of that amendment, these pieces, let me find the future land use map so I can show you, because there were two pieces immediately adjacent to the site we're discussing today that were changes, part of that as well. Sorry, it has to go so far back. And it's these, are they off the map here now, Deborah? There, yeah, there were two pieces right here that were townhomes, that were actually, because of the nature of the development of the townhomes, those were brought in as UR as well. So we do have UR in the vicinity of this, but it was UR and UR2 that were the changes last cycle to the area to the southwest of here, and immediately west of here.
Right, thank you.
When this originally was permitted, this came through as, I know we didn't have the language for PUD, but was it pretty much a planned unit development, or...
This was a master plan community, actually even predated what was the DRI process in the state. And so really, we were working off of a master plan that was provided to us by the developer, and that's why, as we talk about this, I go back to that master plan to share with you, again, out of the point of, this was master planned as a mixed-use community that contained not just a diversity of housing, but also a diversity of land uses, period, from community services to retail and professional services, and in some cases, of course, wrecking open space.
So I'm going to ask you, one, if you could summarize to the best of your ability what you understand, the issues to be in this whole lawsuit thing that sort of just got settled. My concern always with these things is that you buy into one thing, and then, at some point along the way, if it doesn't become profitable, we dealt with something similar to this out in Southwood, where folks came through later and said, you know, the market has changed, conditions have changed, we kind of want out, yet folks have bought into one thing and maybe even paid a premium under the belief of that one thing that then later changes. So I want to understand better, what are the enforcements around whatever the neighborhood covenants or restrictions are, and then if you could just summarize what you understand to have been settled through this lawsuit would be great.
Sure. There are, and there are a multitude of issues at play in that mediation agreement or mitigation agreement, and it's, it covers everything from the reinvestment of funds from the development of this site back into the golf course to buffers. Some of those things are obviously things that we can control, and actually, we do have pieces in place in our land development code to address. Other parts, like the reinvestment of the funds from the sale of this site to, into the golf course, is not something that we address in our comprehensive plan or our land development code. But I think it's an important point you bring up, is if this is granted, and tomorrow, for some reason, those covenants and restrictions do not occur, and this property is sold, and someone else comes in with it, what are we left with? In our opinion, you've got urban residential there already in the form of Kilrush and the other townhome projects that are immediately to the west. You would have similar development on this site, at least in a similar density and intensity on the site. We do have regulations in place regarding buffering of uses from other uses. In this case, you'd have a 30-foot buffer from the single-family homes to this development, 30-foot vegetated buffer. And while some would say that's not adequate enough, we are talking about buffering single-family homes, let's say, detached, single-family homes from attached, single-family homes. So it's not as if we're jumping from a residential use to a non-residential use. We're not putting a school next to an industrial park. We're putting townhomes as we see today, and that's worst-case scenario, townhomes next to single-family homes in this case. So worst-case scenario, someone leaves, and someone else comes in and says, I'd like to develop this under a UR designation. They come in with a development program for primarily townhomes, maybe a few quads or triplexes, but again, that comes out of their overall density, so it all evens out in the wash. Then they have to go through the concurrency process, which means that they then have to evaluate the traffic impacts, measure them against the capacity available on the existing facilities, and if they break anything, they're on the hook to pay for the repairs or pay for the improvements that would fix that. That is a pretty big hook, and that is why the developer, as part of the mitigation or mediation agreement, has limited their development program to something significantly less than what's permitted by the land use category, because they understand where that threshold is, where they would basically break stuff, and they don't want to get above that. So whoever came in with that, even if the covenants and restrictions didn't limit it to, let's say, 180 units, those people would have to come in, go through that process, they'd even have to write a pretty hefty check for those impacts, or they would have to limit their development program to something that was, that did not cause those impacts. So my overall point is, we have lots of rules and regulations in play to ensure that this just isn't, you know, wholesale carnage out here, that we're not just coming out and somebody can throw up anything and everything they want. The designation is, again, similar to that adjacent to it. It's only one step up. This is literally our next step up from RP. We're not going two or three categories up, we're literally just going up one more category. And we have, we have land development code regulations in place to control for things like buffering and for transportation impacts.
And right now, just so I can understand the parties and the conversation, there's the owner, developer, the golf club members, is there...
My understanding, yes.
Okay, and then, landowners, so your neighborhood association, or...
Correct.
Whoever, okay.
That's correct.
And do you have to live in the neighborhood to be a member of the golf club? Okay. Okay, that's helpful.
Yeah, one other question, and you may not be able to answer this, maybe the residents can. What is your voting threshold for approving your covenants and restrictions? Is it simple majority, is it a, is it a...
Do we, if we could just get either one representative voice, or does staff know? You want to take the mic if you will?
And the reason I ask the question is that even if all of these items were put in the covenants and restrictions, and they don't meet the voting threshold, even if it's a simple majority...
If you could go to the, sir, 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 this is being televised, I just want to make sure we're able to get this into the microphone.
I'm sure, Commissioner Miller, you know that our covenants just got... I'm sure Commissioner Miller, you know that our covenants just got...
One, one second, just, just in response to the question of...
Oh, my gosh, we've got a member of our Homes Association Board out here.
We'll have whoever that board members, you could come up and answer the question.
And he can address it.
That'd be great. Thank you. I think, Commissioner, will you reset your question as he's making his way to the microphone?
It's just a question of what, what is the threshold for approving your covenants and restrictions? Is it a simple majority? Is it a supermajority of those present and, and voting?
It is certainly a majority, but there's a number of meetings, you have to, various meetings, certain percentages of the residents must approve that. Once that's approved, then expands out to a greater area till the, till the final vote is taken. So, you need the majority of all the units that vote when the covenants come up or changes in the covenants.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. Commissioners, any other questions on this item? Signal for the questions, we thank you very much for your presentation. Is there any further business to come before the board?
The first day, thank you.
All right, thank you. Seeing none, I believe, just to restate what I believe the calendar on this is, we are gonna be back on April 4th, if that's correct? Staff?
That is correct, yeah. I'm moving forward to our...
We'll be back on these items on April 4th for transmittal hearing, and May 3rd for final adoption. So, thank you again for your time, good luck. This meeting is adjourned.
You said, "Good luck."